It takes a few seconds to come through on YouTube.
It seems to be up Alec.
Great, thank you. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 23rd, 2021 Meeting of the Edgemont Board of Education. Do I have a motion to bring us out of exec into public session? Marikiya, second Judy, we are in public session, welcome everyone. So first order of business is approval of March night minutes. Do I have a motion to approve Judy of a second Pamela, all in favor? Minutes are approved. So now I'm going to turn it over to Victoria for acceptance of gifts.
Yes, hi everyone, good evening. I'd like to ask the board's approval of two very generous gifts. One from anonymous donors for Edgemont Athletics in the amount of $13,125. And from the PTA for Sealy Place School, third grade furniture, $18,559. Ask the board's approval of these very generous gifts.
Do I have a motion to approve? Jennifer, second Monica, all in favor? You're approved. As always, we are ever grateful for these gifts. It always allows us to do things that we would not otherwise be able to do necessarily through operating budget. So we are very thankful to both, in this case, the PTA and our very generous anonymous donors for these great gifts. Especially in a year when we are squeezed more than even usual. So thank you again. With that, I will send it back to Victoria again for the superintendent's report. For those of you, as always, there's, there is a form that was on the instructions for this meeting that is open that on which you can post your questions. We will get to those questions at the end of each section. Once we've discussed that section, we will take those questions and any others that people were on might, might have. So Victoria, back to you.
Um, so Alec, we'll start with reopening. Great. Well, good evening again, everyone. Throughout the school year, we have been in a continual cycle of reopening. We phased in groups of students for a full day in person throughout the year. We began the year with a hybrid model and immediately started a phased return for the students who were least benefiting from remote and hybrid instruction. Students classified as special education, those who have English as a new language, and most recently, the kindergarteners, first graders and second graders in both elementary schools. We continue to follow the New York State Department of Health guidelines. And once the vaccinations were available to all faculty and staff, we envisioned an opportunity to finish this school year as closely as we can to the way we'd like to begin the next school year with all students back to school in person. Many believe that psychologically, it's better to work together through the challenges of what is known than to fear the unknown. Last summer was full of fear and unknowns. We know so much more now than we did then about how the disease spreads in schools and how we can keep each other, how can we keep each other safe? Before we present our plan to the board, I'd like to begin with thanking the teachers and all faculty members. Your flexibility in teaching in person and remotely has allowed students to actively participate in their learning, no matter their home or health situations. Your reinvention of the classroom and all learning experiences and the time and effort to do so are recognized and appreciated by the board, the community, and by me. Thank you also to the administrators for your collaborations, communications, critical thinking, and planning. This careful attention to process and phasing allowed us to move forward together. To the support staff for keeping our district and schools running and safe, another thank you. And of course, to the Board of Education and community and parents, thank you for partnering with us so closely. So tonight, we will talk about the timeline for the next phase, returning students in grades three through 12. And now I'd like to turn it over to Michael Curtin, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Mr. Curtin.
Thank you, Victoria. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you. I'm going to be, for the most part, playing the role of the emcee tonight, no pun intended. But I will give a brief sort of overview of what the next few weeks are going to be looking like and then turn it over to first Kyle and then to the elementary principals to talk a little bit more specifically about their plans. And at the very end, I will be sharing a little bit of information about some of the end of year assessments that, that we have. And so just to start out, back at the March 9th meeting, we announced our intent to attempt to get all students back to campus who want to be on campus by the end of April. And we still had to work out a lot of details, but we've been spending the last, the last two weeks doing just that, trying to sort out all the details. We know a lot more now than we did two weeks ago, but there are still lots of pieces to, to put together as, as you'll hear about tonight. So we did shortly thereafter, we sent out parent surveys to understand which children would be remaining remote only and who would be coming in person in the elementary schools. And then after this evening, we will be sending out a second survey. We did send out a survey a couple of days or maybe a week ago to EHS parents and asking them, they're thinking if we had one schedule. And now we're looking at a different schedule. So we're going to do another round of, of data gathering around that that Kyle will explain in more depth. And then, but are still, our expectation is that in the week after that, we will be asking parents to, EHS parents to commit to remote only hybrid or full day plans for their kids. Starting on April 14th, we'll have our third and fourth graders back. The following day, we'll bring our seventh through ninth graders back. The following week, on the 19th, we will have our 10th through 12th graders come back. And then on the 21st, our fifth and sixth graders will be returning. And so as we had hoped, by the end of April, we expect to have any student who wants to be back on campus for a full day instruction to be back on campus. And, but that doesn't mean that if your family has a concern about your being on campus, still a health concern, we will continue to end to, to offer remote only instruction for students through the end of the school year. Right at that, at this point, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and invite Kyle to share his. He has a separate presentation. So Kyle, I turn it over to you to give us an update on what's happening at EHS.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that. Let me just share my screen. And as Mike mentioned, we presented on the AM PM schedule with a full day option last week and we shared a survey. Based on the survey data that we collected, we realized that we had significant concerns related to health and safety issues during the transition period. So at this point, we do not believe that the AM PM with a full day option is a viable option. On Friday, we sent out a communication indicating that we were going to look into the feasibility of a nine-period day, which is our traditional schedule from previous years with a full day option. We want to use a similar process to talk through what that nine-period day would look like is when we talked about the AM PM schedule last week. To do that, we want to identify our goals for the remainder of the year. Talk through process, how we got here, what our next steps are. Identify important health and safety guidelines. Specifically name what the concerns are with the full day option related to the AM PM schedule. Speak about the options that families are provided under the nine-period day. Go into greater detail about the hybrid option and what that would look like under a nine-period day. Identify our plan for lunch and then speak about some of the challenges that are unique to the nine-period day to understand what the benefits are, but to also get a sense of, you know, what are some of the concerns we have if we move forward with this plan? Our goals, first and foremost, is to maintain health and safety. We, we think we've done a great job of that this year and we want to make sure that those health and safety protocols stay in place to continue with that success that we've had all year. We also want to make sure that we provide options for families. We know that each family has unique needs and we believe that by offering different options to families, they can find a plan that best meets those needs. And our charge right now, we've had a number of challenges that we had to overcome this year. Our next challenge is to figure out, how do we best bring back students for the full day option in a safe way? Our process before we presented on the AM PM full day option, we met with a, a large number of stakeholders multiple times to come to, together with a plan that made sense for a full day option with the AM PM schedule. We then presented on that last week and we shared a survey with the community. We were a bit surprised to see how many families were interested in the full day option and how many students would stay on campus during the transition period. Based on the interest, we, we do not believe that that AM PM schedule with a full day option is a viable option. The amount of time during the transition period that students would be free and the number of students that would be on campus presents serious concerns that we think we, we just couldn't move forward with that plan as a full day option. On Friday, we announced that we would look into the feasibility of a nine-period full day option. And I think we're in a place now where we've recognized some of the challenges, but none of those challenges would prevent us from moving forward. What we don't know yet is what's the desirability with the community for a nine-period full day option? Because we recognize that that's a big shift from what we've had this year. So moving forward, we'd like to outline what the nine-period day would look like with a full day hybrid and remote option. We would send out a survey later tonight to collect feedback, to get a sense of, of the community's preference. We will meet with students later in the week, all in an effort to try to finalize our plan prior to break. Assuming all of that holds true, we'd be in a place to ask families to identify their preference for the remainder of the year by Tuesday, April 6th, with our goal of bringing back students in grades seven, eight, and nine by Thursday, April 15th. If we have grade seven, eight, and nine back on campus for Thursday and Friday, April 15th and 16th, we would have high school students' grades 10, 11, and 12 be remote for those days and then bring all students back on Monday, April 19th. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Joseph to talk a little bit about health and safety.
Thanks, Ms. Joseph. Thanks, Kyle. So as Kyle mentioned, we have three major goals that, that we look to and we want to bring kids back to campus. And also, what does the schedule look like? The superseding goal has always been health and safety of all students and faculty and staff on campus. Just to give you some background, schools follow the New York State Department of Health for guidelines around health and safety. The Department of Health follows the CDC. The DOH came up with five mitigation strategies to make sure that we keep all individuals safe on campus. The first one is masking. Everyone on campus should be wearing a mask at all times, except for when they're eating. Physical distancing, as of, is even as of today, the Department of Health says six feet distance. It could be three feet with a barrier. Washing hands, respiratory hygiene, every single classroom has been provided with sanitizer and hand wipes to make sure that we keep maintaining that. We've had opportunities for custodial services to do a great job with cleaning facilities and also improving ventilation. Throughout this time of, of hybrid opening, we've been contact tracing and quarantining students. We've also recently implemented surveillance testing. So these are all the things that we've been working on to make sure all people are safe. So CDC just recently changed their guidelines to go from six feet to three feet without a barrier. We expect DOH to follow suit typically follows that. So as CDC and DOH gets more information, they change their guidelines. But what hasn't changed? Our fiscal resources haven't changed and our human resources haven't changed. And those two things together help us maintain health and safety. I'm going to pass it off to Jen Johnson now to talk about the options.
Thank you, Mary Rose. So as Kyla and Mary Rose shared, our goal is to create a full-day learning option for students. So the question then becomes, why not simply add a full-day option to our current AM PM schedule? To explore that question, we sent out a survey on full-day instruction to the parents in our EHS community last week. We received 568 responses from parents representing approximately 57% of the student population. So thank you very much to those who took the time to respond. And you can see on this slide, several important data points from the survey. 72% of parents indicated that they would like their children to attend for a full day in person, while nearly 29% of parents would like their children to stay on campus during the transition period. Almost 40% of parents do not want their children to stay on campus during the transition, while nearly 41% of parents were not sure if they wanted their child to stay on campus. We recognize that nearly 40% of families did not respond to the survey, so we don't know their plans. Nevertheless, the information we do have gives us a clear indication that there are health and safety concerns particularly surrounding the transition period. Given the numbers of the parents who did respond, we could see approximately 500 students on campus during the transition. And given the length of the transition period, we have doubts about the ability to manage that number of students for that length of time, given current masking and social distancing guidelines. So that led us to consider reverting to our traditional nine-period day schedule. Now, as a reminder, and for those of you who aren't familiar with our traditional bell schedule, you can see here that we have nine periods, each of which are 40 minutes long. Each student is also assigned to a 40-minute lunch period and that could be either period four, five, six, or seven. Going back to a nine-period day schedule still provides options for families. We've said before and we recognize that many students would benefit from full-day in-person instruction. And we also recognize the need to maintain flexibility and continue to work with families to meet their particular needs. With a nine-period day schedule, students can opt for remote instruction based on those needs. And they can also continue to come in late and/or leave early based on their free periods in their own schedule. Within the nine-period day, each family has several options. Students can attend school full day. They can also be fully remote or they can engage in hybrid learning. And I'll turn it back to Kyle to speak more about the hybrid option.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. For students who want to stay fully remote, that's an option that they can pursue whether we move to a full-day option or not. The fully remote option will stay in place for the remainder of the year. For students who want to move to the full-day model, in a lot of ways, using the nine-period school day will feel similar to what school was like last fall and will be similar to what we expect school to look like next September. So it meets the goal of trying to end the year as close as possible to how we will start in September. But we also know that we have some families that would like to have a hybrid option. And why is that? So about 70, 17% of respondents whose completed answers for the AM PM survey indicated that they'd like to continue with a hybrid option. We expect that many students will still want to have a hybrid option with the nine-period day because they want to be on campus, but they may not want to be on campus during lunch. And this hybrid option can allow students to be on campus for class, but they may not necessarily have to be on campus for lunch. And the way this would work is for this eighth-grade example, this student could be on campus periods one through five, transition during their lunch period and then attend classes remotely, periods seven, eight, and nine. Now, the problem with that is if that is what they did every single day, they would never see their teachers in the afternoon. So what we could do is if this student was, let's say, on Monday, was on campus in, in the morning for periods one through five in the remote in the afternoon, the next day, the student could alternate. So the student would be remote for periods one through five, then commute to campus and then be in person in the afternoon. And then that way would make sure that students see their teachers at least once every two days. If a student did not have that flexibility to be on campus and rotate their schedule like that, we would ask students to identify whether they'd be on campus before their lunch period or after their lunch period. And again, the lunch period provides the opportunity for students to either leave campus or come to campus for a transportation time. Likewise, for, as an example, for 11th grade, if a student was on campus for periods one, two, three, they could go home during period four and they'd be remote in the afternoon. The next day, they could be remote in the morning, come to school during lunch, and then be on campus for periods five, six, seven, eight, and nine. We still will provide a flexibility if a student needs to go, go remote day to day, but we would ask for advanced notice preferably up to a week so teachers have more time to plan. We understand there needs to be some flexibility, but we'd also like to cut back a little bit on the amount that students go remote day to day because it does become problematic for teachers to plan when they don't know who's going to be in their class. The other question that we know that people have is what is, what would lunch look like under a nine-period day? As a reminder, lunch periods are periods four, five, six, and seven in the nine-period day. We would allow seniors and juniors to leave campus during their lunch periods. Students in grades seven through 10 could leave if they were signed out by a parent. The way we would make that work is every morning, I send an easy screen reminder via email. I would include a link to a Google form so parents could indicate whether they would sign their child out that day for lunch. And we'd ask that parents make sure that they do complete that form every day if they're going to sign their child out. We would have students on campus for lunch under the schedule. We'd want to maximize outdoor space as much as possible. We're fortunate to have a beautiful campus so students could eat in the courtyard, the breezeways, the patio. We have a lot of great outdoor space. We could also have students indoors with the cafeteria, the San Marco gym. And we have one or two other places if we need to where we could put students for lunch. And again, all students would be six feet apart if they're, when they're inside or outside having lunch with their mask off and all spaces would be supervised. So this is a general overview that hopefully provides you more information to decide what your preference would be in the nine-period day, whether you go full-day, hybrid, or remote. And we know that there are probably questions related to the schedule and we look forward to answering those questions later on. With that, I'll stop presenting my screen. And I'll turn it over to, to Ms. Wurstein and Ms. Allen to talk about the elementary plans.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. Mike, if you could present your screen again, that would be great. And then I'll get started. I want to first start out by saying to the EHS team, that was a fabulous presentation and I appreciate the updates about what you're thinking about in this process because I think at Sealy in Greenville, we're very lucky that we're already in the process. So the way that we're going to start off our talk tonight is to talk about where we are now, to think about where we are going. One of the first things that we think about, when we think about where are we now, is that our students now have the gift of in-person learning. The number of times that we've all heard, "We are so happy to be back," is, is so special and amazing. The kids want to be there, the teachers want them there. And although we're wearing masks and socially distanced, it feels so good. If you look at the picture on the top, for example, this is a second-grade classroom. The teacher brought in balloons on the first day and the energy in the room was infectious. Like it's just, we're in-person learning. And one of the things we noticed is that they have to get back to these in-person, oh, sorry. These in, it's Sophie, everyone, these in-person learning behaviors, knowing how to be a student in school because they have been learning on a computer for part of the day. Also, those social skills about being back in person is incredibly important. Something special about elementary school and about the fact that we have two cohorts or three cohorts really is now when you walk into the classrooms with this gift of in-person learning, you have students meeting each other for the first time or seeing each other who haven't seen each other in a long time. We just had a student return from remote learning and he's taller than me. He's not in kindergarten, but he's taller than me. They've grown so much and it just feels so good to be seeing them right there in person. Something else that we've noticed about having our students in person is although the hybrid instruction was a, a good experience for many and a tough experience for many as well, there's something different about having the opportunity to really check in in person with a student. Although our teachers were checking in online or remoting in, there's nothing like that opportunity for a teacher to look over a first grader's shoulder while they're reading to help support their learning. That is the gift of being in person. Wow, this next one, the sound of laughter. You'll see in the bottom picture, we have two first graders during our centers period playing a good old game of knock hockey. Knock hockey is a very good socially-distanced game that the students are playing. Social emotional learning is so essential to our students always. But coming back from a pandemic, it's, it's an unbelievable gift again to have the students have the opportunity for lessons, for conversations, for meeting each other. These two students in this picture actually didn't know each other prior to this year. One was cohort A, one was cohort B, one is new, one is a former student. So that gift of laughter in the hallways and on the playgrounds is, is heartwarming. Finally, what's been really great is the parent support as well for successful in-person learning. When we came back and we didn't, there's so many things that we didn't know that we didn't know. So for example, when we're trying to distance everyone at recess, having the gift of chalk has been absolutely wonderful. And we have parents supporting that and sending in the chalk that they're not using at home or just helping us as we go through. You'll see at the bottom picture, a student sitting on her towel as she's eating lunch. That's lunch at, in the elementary schools, in both schools right now. And it is a joy, it is a pleasure, it is a gift. And we thank the community and the teachers and everybody on this call for letting us have this moment to bring them back. And we're so excited for the next group of students that's coming in. So thank you for having us. I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Good evening, everyone. Ditto to everything Eve said, it's been great to have the kids back. And I think helpful it is to plan for the next phase. And you know, we're, we're a very collaborative administrative team. So you know, the, the experiences we may have with kindergarten, first and second graders coming back are not only helping us and informing us about our next elementary group, but it's helping us all the way up through grade 12 in order to figure out, you know, what, what's best for kids and, and what will work best and what will make this the, the best experience for the students and for the staff. And you know, I echo also, I'm, I'm hearing that I'm choppy, but I hope that I at least can be, I'm being heard. Even if it's a little choppy. Let me just see, just trying to see if I can make it any better, whether it's. Internet, I'm on, no, I'm on the right one. So I guess bear, bear with me. But what I was going to say is that it's, it's really helpful also to have this opportunity to have the grades back this year as we think ahead and prepare for next year. We're very excited about ending the year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the where are we going piece that you've mentioned, which for us is three through six coming back. Mike mentioned the dates of April 14th for third and fourth and April 21st for fifth and sixth. A lot of what, what we have put into place for K through two, but there are some key differences. So I'm just going to touch on some of those and just say that what you're seeing in front of you are examples also, we have a first-grade example here, a kindergarten example and a second-grade example. And I think to echo what you've said, one of the things that's so great is to see kids being kids, to see kids playing and even in the classroom setting, being able to, to really engage with each other and meet each other and play together has been really terrific. Am I frozen?
Jen, you're, you're a little bit choppy and I just want to make sure that everybody can hear it. I'm wondering if I can either jump in and. I don't know if it's choppy to everybody else, but I'm, or Marissa, I'm hearing, I'm missing a lot of what you're saying too. And I think now she's frozen. Mike or Victoria, is there any? Do you want me to just jump in?
Yeah, would you mind? That would be helpful, I think.
I don't mind at all. Jen, if you jump back in and want to take over, I'm totally fine for you to do that, but we want to talk about where we're going for three to six.
Am I, is it a little better now?
It's hard to hear.
Okay.
Eve, Marissa, do you want to?
Sure. Sure. Is is, can you hear me all right?
You're breaking up a little bit too.
Oh, boy.
Must be a Greenville thing.
So why don't I? Eve, why don't you jump, jump in, please? I can jump in. So we're talking about where we're going and I think Jen was trying to say that we're moving the K two, it's been a positive experience at both schools, and now we're looking to the third through sixth grade. In grade three and four, we are bringing back April 14th, she said, and five and six, we're bringing back on April 21st. One of the big things and one of the biggest changes when we bring back grades three and four, five and six is that in grades three and four, we will now be offering a remote-only teacher for our remote-only students. There will be no more remoting in with the high, into the classroom experience. Those remote-only students will have a remote-only teacher like they have in grades K to two. It's been very successful in those grades. We've had a great experience with it and it's something that we are going to continue on for grades three and four.
All right, Eve, any chance that I'm coming in now?
It is better.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, I switched devices. Should I?
Sure. Maybe just let Eve finish talking about the remote only and then you can jump in on lunch specials and support services.
Perfect.
So in grades five and six, for our remote-only students, they will remain as part of the class environment, although they might be co-horted into one group in one homeroom, it depends on the school. They will still have their homeroom teachers. So I just want to clarify because I can imagine, what do you mean there's a remote-only teacher? So if your children or your students are remote-only in grades three and four, they will have a different remote-only teacher for the remainder of the school year starting on April 14. We are in the process of helping to support these teachers and prepare them to have a successful end of the school year so that our students have success as well as they transition over. We felt that this was in the best interest of the students and of the teachers so that they can have a robust learning experience in this environment. We can answer more questions about this if I left out anything, but I will turn it over to Jen to talk about the rest of her slides.
Hi, sorry about the technical issues. So yeah, so picking up where Eve left off, we, so as as she said, the third and fourth grade would, if anyone was fully remote, they would be making a transition to a different teacher. If they remain fully remote, fifth and sixth would remain integrated into the current program with the homeroom teachers they have. Lunch is something that looks slightly different right now at the two schools, but as far as three through six is concerned, they would look pretty much the same, which is, we're really optimistic that with the post-vacation start for three through six, that lunch will be outside virtually every day. There are obviously exceptions, it could be raining, the ground could then be wet for a day or so. And if that happens, we would come back inside and use the classroom setting for lunch, maintaining the six-foot distancing. In both schools, there could be a spillover, a little bit of spillover of some kids needing to go elsewhere in order to make sure that we maintain the strict six feet for eating in the classrooms. But that, there will also be cleaning after the kids eat lunch in the classroom setting, and that will allow them to then transition back into instruction after they eat. But, you know, we we're pretty optimistic that we're going to be able to have lunch outside quite a bit, and that's that's exciting to have sort of picnic style is is a nice treat for the kids. Specials will remain more or less the same as they have now. Those again also look slightly different at the two schools, but there there will still be in-person specials as we have now with the opportunity for fully-remote students to participate in the specials. So that we expect it to be more or less the same as it is now. Support services are kind of undergoing a bit of a transition because they have been, in some cases, fully remote for all students, whether they were fully remote or hybrid. And having so many students come back, very, very high percentages of students at K two and anticipated at three, four, three, four, and five, six, we really have looked at at how we can shift to have the majority of support services in person. And that's already begun for the K through two students. And we do expect for three through six to have the the vast majority of the services as in-person services. There is some shared staff between the two schools for support services, which does make it a little bit tricky because of space availability and teachers being based at one school or the other. But the the ones that are based in one school and not shared have already made the transition to being in-person. So that's really great. I mean, in-person is obviously best. And so we're excited to have the majority of our program across the board in all different areas as an in-person experience for the kids. So having said that, we're very excited about everything. And as Eve said, appreciate the support of the board and the community in making this happen and and in the kids for being so enthusiastic and and doing such a great job to transition back so well. So having said that, I think I'm passing it back to Mike at this point.
I would just add one thing about the grades three and four remote-only classes. They are single-grade classes, so there will be one section of grade three that includes students from both Greenville and Sealy, and one section of grade four that includes students in in the two schools as well. They won't be multi-grade sections. So thank you for pinch hitting at the last minute there, Eve. And so we're just going to wrap up this sort of, what does the end of the year look like? For better or worse, the end of the year typically means assessments. And there's been a number of changes both at the state and local level in terms of expectations for assessments this year, and just wanted to make them clear to the board. If the grades three through eight ELA and math exams are on, the state applied for a waiver from the US, from the federal government that has not been acted upon yet, but the federal government said they were not going to provide blanket waivers for state testing. But what they did do is say there'll be flexibility in terms of the timing and the types of tests. So what we know now is that the ELA and math exams have been shortened to one day each. We will be giving them on April 27th and May 12th, and they are only being given in-person at school. The grades four and eight science exams, we have heard less about that, but we do know that they will not include the practical section, which is a hands-on sort of doing an experiment portion. And obviously, that would be very problematic with COVID. So we do know that those tests are on, but they will not include a hands-on portion. The Regents exams for high school-level students. Again, the state wanted to, I think, cancel them. The feds won't let them, so the state has basically said the only ones we'll give are the ones that were required to by federal law. And that means ELA, Algebra I, Living Environment, and Earth Science. And they are happening in the last two weeks of June, as they typically do. AP exams are a little different. First of all, our policy has been, our practice and policy have been, from in most cases, if you take an AP course, you must sit for the exam. We've waived that this year, so AP exams will be optional for students enrolled in AP courses. The College Board created a schedule that has a number of different testing windows and gives you flexibility in terms of when you test. Kyle and his team came up with a schedule that wherein the seniors are taking their exams a little earlier so they can be done with them, that would be the first two weeks of May, I think, be done with them in time for senior options, which starts on May 14th. But in classes where there are predominantly underclassmen, they've taken a later testing date just to give those students and their teachers as much time as we can to prepare for the exam. And it's all going to be in-person, although fully-remote students can contact their building administration to arrange, in some cases, for at-home testing. And then finally, finals. We do not at this point anticipate having a formal final exam period, but giving teachers the discretion to give class-based tests at the end of the year that could be cumulative or not. The reasoning behind that is that we don't have a lot of confidence in the potential integrity of those exams, the validity. And it would be giving up instructional time, which we don't want to do. So we, there was generally a feeling that it would be helpful to make up for some lost time that's come with hybrid learning by using those days at the end of the year to, for teaching and learning. Finally, that we plan that the last day of classes will be June 22nd with one wrinkle, we're talking about the ninth graders who are going to have to take two Regents during Regents Week, the Algebra I Regents and either Earth Science or Living Environment. And we want to possibly change the schedule a little bit to give them time to prepare for those two exams. So that's kind of whirlwind tour of what's happening. We are sending out communications to the elementary students or high school students as needed to let them know the specifics of each testing program. So that's kind of what's going on with the testing and assessment at the end of the year. And with that, I think it's time for questions. We've covered a lot of ground here tonight, so Brian, are you going to be the the question asker or? Would you like me to do it?
No, I I think we'll pass it back to the board. The board usually
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you, Victoria. So yes, what I'd like to do is right, have the board ask any questions that they have this time. Then once we've gone through the board questions, I would like to turn it back to someone in the administration to go through the questions that have come through the the Google form. And I just posted on the YouTube site the link again for people to post their questions. So we'd ask anybody from the community who's watching, who has not yet posted a question to to place them there so we can know we're we're being equitable and, you know, have them all in one place to look to. But let me start with any questions from the board. Judy?
I just, I I noticed as Kyle was going through the the nine-period schedule that the example that he showed, for instance, of an 11th grader, that there was lunch, American history, and then a free period in the middle of the day. If the student chose to, because this is an 11th grader now, it seems possible to stay on campus during the lunch period so she could attend the American history class in person and then go home during the free, would that be permissible? And obviously, the answer is different for 11, 12 versus the younger. So if you could address both situations for parents, that would be helpful.
The answer is yes, we would allow the transition to or from campus to take place during a free period. I think for the purpose of of trying to understand what the hybrid schedule actually looks like, we felt that it was better to identify the lunch period. That's a little neater, a little cleaner, and then anyone who is interested in the hybrid option, we would contact them and have individual conversations to make sure they know what the different options are. But yes, the free period could also be used, and many students have a free period, so that could be another good option for students.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Okay, can you hear me?
We'll come back to you in a minute. Pamela?
Right, I have a couple of questions. One relates to cleaning and sanitizing the schools, particularly, I guess, after lunchtime, really, like, and this goes for the elementary schools and the junior, senior high school. What is the plan? Maybe you mentioned and I missed it, but what is the plan to make sure everything has been as thoroughly sanitized as it can be in light of the fact that even though the kids will be six feet apart when they're eating, they still have their masks off?
I can answer for what? Eve, do you want to start first and then answer the elementary and then Kyle from the high school perspective? So there's different levels of cleaning when we think about students eating lunch during a pandemic. The first level of cleaning is their hands. Now, while we've always hoped that our kids have cleaned their hands before they've eaten, we are very focused on making sure that they clean their hands before they eat. That is the first level of cleaning. Then they all have their own area at their desk. It will be different at EHS, of course, or in a cafeteria. They eat, they clean up, they put their masks on, they throw out, and then the custodial crew comes through with the sprayer and they wipe down the desks. And the kids leave the room during the cleaning and head outside. Again, we are trying to eat outside as much as possible, like the towels and the blankets or the chairs, but there is a system for cleaning. And one thing I will say is it is lovely to see that there is much less food on the floor when they're eating in their personal space of their classroom. So that has been a big benefit. And it's been really wonderful to see. And I have to commend the parents and guardians. You make fabulous lunches and I am truly impressed by these bento boxes and they have some really good food in there. So that's what the cleaning looks like. They are cleaning after each meal. Elementary.
I'm sorry, before Kyle talks, just a second. So just my understanding, and I am not a doctor, that we're, the concern is less with so-called phomite transfer or, you know, that from the surfaces as it is in the air. And so is there something that can be done to make sure, I don't know, to clean the air or or something?
The 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 main, the main cleaning of the air has to do with the ventilation and has to do with the air movement. And that's why, as we brought more students back, we're testing the airflow in in each classroom and keeping check of the airflow. There's really no way to specifically clean the air, but but it's the ongoing movement of the air and the ventilation of the air that we're focused on.
And we also, we make sure that the exterior doors are open, that the doors to the hallway are open for cross-ventilation as well. So once we have them outside, that's going to help a lot, but we really are very focused on trying to have as much airflow as possible and to have the period of time that they're eating lunch not be, you know, be enough to eat and not rush with the eating, but to to get the eating done. They don't speak when they eat, they listen to music, and then they wrap up quickly so that they can get outside to have less time without the masks on.
Kyle, did you want to jump in?
Sure. At the junior, senior high school, just so everyone knows, we currently disinfect during the transition period between the AM and PM cohorts, and then at the end of the day, when students go home. With the nine-period schedule, our plan would be to try to emphasize and prioritize the spaces that students eat. So that'd be the cafeteria, the San Marco gym, and any other places that students would have lunch. We would want to try to disinfect between cohorts. Now, first you have to clean spaces and make sure all the trash is gone, and then you have to disinfect. In terms of how do we try to maximize space, using the outdoor space would be best because the air will help clean itself at that point. When students are inside, we'd make sure all exterior doors and windows are open to help with air movement. And we could identify classrooms that are empty during each of the lunch periods. And we're not ready to say that we could continue to disinfect those classrooms, but we would be able to identify which rooms are are available. Now, we do have some classrooms that are used pretty much straight through. but we would be able to identify which rooms are, are available. Now, we do have some classrooms that are used pretty much straight through so that we would disinfect at the end of the day for those classrooms. I, I realized, I had said in our presentation, I wanted to talk a little bit about the challenges of the nine-period day just to sort of round out, to make sure everyone had a full picture. And I think one of the challenges is how you disinfect. I'd like to, if possible, just highlight a couple other challenges, just so everyone has a full picture. The concerns around mask fatigue, you know, now faculty and students are gonna be on campus longer. So there could be some concerns, so we'd have to build in mask breaks. The student workload would be greatly increased with the nine-period day. So we'd have to think about how we would manage homework and expectations there. The large classes that meet, band, chorus, gym. Right now, they have, they put together a special schedule that accommodates students, and they would have to go back and recreate that schedule. The change in routine and structure at this point in the year is a, is a big change for some students and some faculty. With two months left, some may ask why make this change now. Lunch, we talked about a little bit, and that's part of the disinfecting. And then finally, if you're remote, it's a lot of screen time for students if you have six periods or seven periods while you're remote. So while we are optimistic that the nine-period day can provide a great option for families, we also need to recognize that there are some challenges there, including how we would disinfect.
Thank you. And ju- just to add to something you just, you just brought up about the instructional time. I mean, I, I personally see it as a plus that there's more instructional time. Like, I, it seems to me that now, you know, kids are actually gonna be in, in Spanish or math or whatever every single day. And I think, I, I personally find that a plus. I don't, I don't know if everyone does, but it seems like a, a good thing at this point, given the number of instructional minutes we've had to date this year. I think it's great if we can increase them a bit. And I think that happens with the nine, nine-period day.
Just to that point, if we look at how do we change instructional minutes? Even, so right now, with the nine-period day, classes would be forty minutes. If we remove two minutes from each class to add to the passing period, we would still have, for a course that meets on a nine-period day, would meet for forty minutes, six days out of a six-day cycle, which, which means it's two hundred and twenty minutes as compared to four days out of six. At forty-five minutes, where currently classes meet at a hundred and eighty minutes. So yes, there's much more instructional time with the nine-period day.
Jennifer.
Okay, well, I didn't get immediate feedback when I unmuted, so am I, am I good?
Yes.
All right. I have two questions. I guess both of them are really mostly for, for Kyle. Kyle, you, you talked about a little bit, one of the challenges being the disruption to kids schedules this late in the school year, instead of taking, you know, the interim step of, of staying with the six-period schedule and just being in person all day. I was wondering if you could expand on your thinking on that and, and how how we might address it.
One thing that's important to note is that the idea of being in person all day with the AM, PM schedule really isn't an option on the table because of all the concerns related to what transition would look like. We have five hundred students who are free for seventy-two minutes. It's not just the seventy-two minutes, it's the adjacent lunch periods that students are free. And so you might ask, what could go wrong with five hundred students with almost two hours of free time during a pandemic? And that, and, you know, we could go in a lot of different directions, but we know that that's not something that we wanna find out. So the benefit of the nine-period day is if there's structured time, lunch periods are built in, we know, that's, that's cool. We know how to make that work. But it is a change in structure. So I think one of the things that we're thinking about is to make sure that we offer the hybrid option for some students who are fully remote, who wanna come in for a, a little bit to be on campus, but need a week or two to transition. And then when they're ready, they could go to the full-day option. The other thing to think about is what does the change mean for students in terms of workload? So if students used to be assigned thirty or forty minutes of homework for each class, maybe an hour, that, that was manageable if they only had three or four classes in the day. If you have seven classes in a day, that number we need to look at. So I think we need to have clear guidelines for how we would make that work for students, and that would be our work with teachers. The mask-wearing is also another concern. So we, we really haven't had mask breaks at the junior, senior high school. I talked with Jen for a little while today to see how Greenville has approached mask breaks, and I think we have a good sense of what that could look like. So I think part of it is to borrow ideas from Eve and Jen, since they're already going through this, to see how that would apply at the junior, senior high school. So I think the option of hybrid and making sure that we don't overload students, and this is also a lot for, for faculty. So I think it's a reminder of, you know, to try to pace yourself and not try to do too much in any one day. Because while we're moving towards the end of the school year, we do still have almost, you know, two months of school left by the time we institute this full-day option.
So what I'm hear, hearing you say, correct me if I'm wrong, a student could opt to go hybrid for a little bit and then decide, hey, this is not as scary as I thought, or this is working out for me, or the weather's nicer and I'm ready to be back more, and then move to full-time in time. It's not a one-time decision?
Yeah, our goal is to, when students are ready to come back, we wanna help make that transition as smooth as possible. And again, this is where talking with Eve and Jen has been helpful. I think what we've seen from their experience is that some parents opted to have their students go home originally for lunch. And then after a couple of days, they realize this works well. We wanna leave our kids on campus. We would expect something similar to happen at the junior, senior high school. So we, we would continue to offer flexibility for families. But the answer is yes.
That's, that's encouraging, cuz I, I think there's gonna be certain students who, who will need that flexibility. Another unrelated question. Free periods. So you talked about lunch and, and, but, you know, the schedule, the eleventh grade schedule that you pulled up had a free period there, which, if I remember correctly, happened to be during a lunch period. And so some of those bigger spaces aren't necessarily going to be available cuz kids are going to be eating there. What, what's the thinking about what happened? And, and eleventh graders are maybe easier because they can have a little more flexibility, but what if it's a seventh grader?
Seventh and eighth graders have assigned study halls, so they never have a free period where they're unsupervised. And, you know, in a traditional year, yes, we have ninth graders, tenth graders, eleventh graders, twelfth graders who have free periods. We do have spaces where they can go. Again, using the outdoor space is really helpful. The library is a helpful space. We're looking at, you know, thinking about what do we do with the LGI? That's a large space as well. But we do have spaces that students can go. And, and if the New York State Department of Health adopts three feet rather than six feet, that takes care of a lot of the space issues that we've had throughout the year.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Monica.
Actually, most of my questions were answered, but, you know, the one thing that really struck me is number one, the, the, if we stick with the current schedule, the vast amount of unstructured minutes for those kids, which I think, for the students, which I think was probably not advisable. And this is an opportunity to regain a lot of the education time that we've had to lose because of things that were beyond our control, but they are now within our control a little bit more. And I think to give that gift back to the students, yes, to make the transition as easy as possible, to make sure it's not too big of a a shock to the system from a homework standpoint, but to be able to be in an instructional, there's more time in instruction during the day and during the week as opposed to unstructured time, I think would probably benefit everybody quite well. So I see you have a lot of of things still to work out, and I know you'll be very thoughtful and methodical about it. But it sounds like you're heading in a really positive direction.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I think the AM, PM schedule has worked well for the first half of the year with the hybrid option. But it really wasn't built for a full-day option. So as we transition to look for the full-day option, it makes sense to adjust our schedule to fit that need. So thank you for that.
Judy.
I'll play a little bit of devil's advocate based upon my reading of questions on the, from the community. There's a lot of pushback seems to be over changing how the schedule is set up at this point in the year. So my question, that's the big preface. My question is, was there any discussion about changing the schedule so that the lunch, the extended lunch period, transition period instead would become a, a, a class period? And so essentially, the kids would have seven periods a day, because it's, it sounds like they've got a lunch period in the schedule already. And a lot of the parents, and even some of the educators I've heard from have been saying how wonderful it is to have those extended periods to really dive into the, the materials. And I'm not expecting a, oh, yeah, we can, we can change around and do it like this. That's not what I'm, I'm, it's just, is this something that is even remotely considerable? Worth consideration, or is it just too complicated to start changing everybody's schedule in order to safeguard the students so that they are not in unstructured time for seventy-two minutes plus lunch? Which I'm guessing is, you know, you're talking about close to two hours by the time you're done. And I absolutely concur that that is not wise for most teenagers during the school day. Long question, sorry.
No, I'll, I'll try to unpack that because I think it's important to understand why can't we just shift our current schedule to make it work? And we've talked about this before, but our schedule is built around nine periods. And if you look at periods one, two, three, eight and nine, we really don't have any available classrooms. So in the beginning of the year, the question was asked, why can't you collapse lunch periods? If, if my memory serves, period four, yes, we have two to three hundred students who are free, but we also have the rest of the school who are attending classes. And I think we have forty-one classes that meet during period four. So we couldn't collapse period four into other periods to get rid of that lunch period. We just don't have enough rooms on campus to move those classes. And there are implications for how we would cover those classes with teachers. So to the question of, you know, why can't we make some of those moves now? The, the challenge that we would run into is that the way the schedule is set up, it wouldn't provide an opportunity for everyone to have lunch under the current schedule. So you need to have a time for students to have lunch during either their lunch period or the transition period. The longer you make the class periods and the shorter you make the transition period, that then means that you're just adding time in part to the lunch periods that are adjacent to the free period. But you have to provide an opportunity for students to have lunch throughout the day. The other thing is to add additional instructional periods during the transition period. There are implications for how many classes teachers teach. There are a lot of conversations that have to happen around that. That is not something that could just shift automatically. And the other thing I would add is that if we are gonna try to create an additional schedule, rather than create an additional schedule that doesn't move us closer to what next year will look like, we think it makes sense to say, if we have to make a change, let's at least make a change that brings us closer to where we will be in September.
Thanks, Kyle. I really appreciate that, that full explanation. That was enormously helpful.
So I, I wanna give you great credit for having the foresight in August or in June to make a nine-period schedule. Because I think that trying to make a nine-period schedule right now, and we honestly wouldn't have been in a position where we could offer full-day instruction. So because I, as having two parent, two students at the junior high school was terrified about how we were gonna deal with the day that my daughter has three hours free in the middle of the day. And I really couldn't figure out how that was gonna possibly work. So, so I appreciate looking at this schedule. I appreciate the way you've looked at the, at the options for transitioning without creating more disruption and more, this is really the schedule that, that kids understand and know. I think they're gonna transition to it rather smoothly. In fact, I would, in looking at some of my kids' Google Classroom pages, on top it says, "Period one." And there is no period one this year, but the teachers originally set them up with those, with those periods in mind because that is the, the mentality that the, that the students and the teachers usually have. So I also wanna note that, at least from my students' perspective, and I know from other students' perspective, and I guess I would assume, I would hope from the teacher's perspective, this type of kind of longer period has been really appreciated. And so the fact that people don't wanna transition away from it, I think is actually a really interesting indicator of, you know, what we're seeing in other districts, which is moving to, to slightly longer periods. And so, you know, I, I look forward to, to having those conversations now that kids and teachers both have had experience with the benefits of, of having this type of thing as well. I have two quick questions. One is around students and, you know, to, to Jen Allen's point and Eve's point, you know, students wanting to eat outside of the general population. Is there gonna be an option for parents to come, take their students so they can eat in the car or at home, and then bring them back for, for the second half of the day? Will that be an option for, for parents? To, to kind of ease some concerns for people around, around eating with other people?
At the junior, senior high school, that's certainly an option. Any parent who wants to pick up their child, again, we would just ask that they, in the email that would be sent each morning with the EasyScreen reminder, we would share a Google form and ask that parents complete that Google form so we know that that's their plan. And the good news in terms of traffic, yes, traffic will, will, will be reminded how problematic traffic is in the morning at the end of the day. But if you do that during the lunch period, traffic shouldn't be so bad because there are four different lunch periods.
Great, great. Yeah, that makes sense. And then the second question is really, I, I do realize that a lot of the free periods that some of these kids have this year is because band and chorus have been so limited. So I'm just wondering if you have any idea about how band and chorus are going to be dealt with? And then if the kids don't have band, you know, I know that you register when they have a free period, but I'm not sure if you've all registered the period that's free because they're not in band or chorus. And do you have a, a place for them to go during those periods?
I met with the performing arts team earlier in the week to talk about like what this might look like. And I, I wanna give them a shout out because they took the AM, PM schedule and said, okay, that, that's the constraints that we need to work in. And then they built their own schedule within that. We're asking them to do something similar now where they have large groups of kids to think creatively about how often they will meet with students. Maybe even looking at study halls to see, are there groups of students in study halls that they can group together and pull them out as another opportunity to meet with them? So they're, they're already planning to think what that might look like. We do know that we'll do, potentially need additional spaces for students because they can't have all hundred and fifteen students together. But we do believe we have enough space on campus to help navigate that. They're doing a great job. Have done a great job all year, and we can help support them, but they're gonna come up with a better plan than I would. So we'll continue to meet, but I think we'll be in a good place for each of those large classes as well.
Great, great. And I do wanna just make one more plug for managing workload, because I think that the students have been utilizing those free periods, which have been longer and have been kind of more prevalent. And you have people who've gone from having three periods, you're gonna have people who go from having three free periods in a day to having a lunch period and no free periods in a day. So I just wanna make sure that the teachers are aware, not just of the, their workload, but also that there's time being taken away from these students as they get towards the end of the year. Oh, and sorry, I had one more thing, which is that it's unique to me, so I'm just gonna make my own little, not me, but, but the, the current eighth graders did not have finals last year and are not gonna have finals this year. And so their first finals are gonna be next year when they're freshmen in high school. And so I guess I would just we think about to the teachers that are in eighth grade, you know, what can we do to support these students in understanding what the end of the year looks like, how to prepare for a complete test, how to think about, you know, combining all the materials together, material together and kind of creating a synthesized understanding of, of material. It's just gonna be, they're gonna go through two years, and, and even the seventh graders too, are gonna go through one year of not kind of having that exercise. And so I think that would be really helpful for, for them just to get some experience in, in that, whether they count towards their grade or not, to be honest.
Thank you for that. I think that's a great point, and we haven't spent a lot, a lot of time thinking about those implications. So thank you for raising that. So thank you for raising that.
I spend a lot of time thinking about it, so.
I, I, you know, I was going to say, there's no reason why a teacher can't use those final few days to just go back over everything and synthesize it. Because the important thing is that it, that it stick into next year. And so, you know, holding kids, making kids take a test to prove that they've learned something when we not, we don't have full confidence that those tests will necessarily prove that. That time might be better spent just going back over the year and, and doing, you know, looking at, at the year in a different way so that kids walk into next year really feeling confident and ready. But I do agree that unfortunately, part of life is taking long, difficult tests. And you need to learn how to do that. And so that's something that we're going to have to address with the rising ninth graders and to a lesser extent with the rising eighth graders. So I think it's, it's, your point is well taken.
Thanks.
Jennifer and Pamela, are those residual hands or do you have new questions? Okay, any other questions from the, Emma?
Yeah, could you just talk again about what happens if we have a positive case in elementary school or in junior, senior high school? How does that affect things like quarantining the kids in the classroom? And it's more problematic in, you know, grades five through 12 because of course they go through a lot of classrooms.
I, I can speak to that. So the quarantining is still less than six feet, or I should say the definition of a close contact is less than six feet for 10 minutes or more. And the 10 minutes is cumulative. So for example, if students are in a large group space and it happens to be the space where they're eating, it's still that six feet. So that's why it's going to be really important to have assigned seats. Back to the why the transition period can't work with 500 students going wherever they want to go. We, we have to have students in assigned seats and assign locations as many times as possible. And that will be the way we determine the close contacts that we then have to share with the Department of Health and then the Department of Health in turn quarantines. But it does still remain less than six feet for more than 10 minutes. But we don't have to, the whole room isn't considered a close contact. We draw a circle and, and look at who, who was assigned to those seats.
And, and our experience so far with, I guess it's K through two, has been full-time now for a little bit. And so have we had any issues with quarantining because of that or, or no?
So far, so good.
That's good to hear.
Jennifer?
I, Kyle, if we go to the, or when we go to a nine-period schedule, I am assuming, I didn't look carefully, but based on the schedule you posted, that it's contemplating the shorter passing periods also. But we are going to have many more kids on school. And although, you know, the six feet for 10, less than six feet for, for a cumulative 10 minutes, it still creates a lot of contact. Can you talk about some of the thinking about how to, how to deal with that?
I think the first thing is to just acknowledge that four minutes passing period is not enough time. We currently have seven. And so the thought is to take two to three minutes off of the end of each period. That would allow faculty to, near the end of the class period, to look out in the hallway. And if the hallway is full at that point, to wait 30 seconds while students leave the hallway and then have their students exit the room. Or if no one's in the hallway, have students leave at that point. Fortunate for us, so much of the time that students spend moving from one class to another is spent outside. That works, that's, that's helpful. But we are, so, so that's one thing. And then the other thing that we talked about over the summer was having one directional hallways. We ended up not really needing that given how many students were on campus. We could pull that plan back out and use that to limit the interaction that students have in the hallway. If that is something that, that we need to do. But I, I think, yes, we need to increase the passing period. Four minutes isn't enough. Would probably stick with six or seven.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board that has any more questions or comments at this point? So I will just quickly echo the kudos to, to everyone that, every part of the district, because this has been incredibly difficult time. And I think you guys have all done amazing job with this. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that's going into this next phase and, you know, really trying to take everything into account and, you know, as, look at all the stakeholders and make sure that they're all being taken care of. So I very much appreciate that, that thoughtfulness and that attention and all the hard work. With that, we will now go to the, the questions that are in the, in the spreadsheet right now. And Victoria, I'll let you decide who you want to have.
I think, I think Brian's going to do it. I've been texting with Brian and he's, he's, he's so darn good at it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, you're welcome. So I think, try to categorize these, let me preface it this way. I think a lot of the questions probably came in before some answers were given. But I do want to recognize the questions in case there are some subtle differences. So for those that I directed to, if it seems as though you've answered it, but you could state that or if there's anything else additional that you can add to it, please do. When I try to categorize them, first, those that seem to be district-related and then do the elementary ones, which are, are smaller in total. And then there's, there's a lot of questions that relates to the high school. So I'll save those ones for last. The first is more of a comment, district-wide. Just wanted to send my thanks, sorry, this is coming from Christine Gondar. Just wanted to send my thanks for all that has gone into this next phase. It seems incredible, incredibly flexible for families with a variety of needs and comfort levels. The year has been incredibly successful considering all facets of the crazy world. The next question comes from David Schultz. Are faculty and staff required to be vaccinated?
No, we are not allowed to require faculty and staff to be vaccinated. It's completely voluntary and it's dependent upon so many things, including medical eligibility for vaccinations. So no, we are not required to or able to require.
The next question comes from Natasha Kosa. A lot of other districts are using tri-fold plexiglass barriers while eating. Are we doing any of this in Edgemont?
Yes, right now, the New York State Department of Health requirement is six feet or a barrier. And we have purchased barriers that are in use at the elementary school. And we have purchased them for the junior, senior high school and are following the guidance carefully.
Thank you. A, a sixth grade kind of logistical question coming from Harry Chu. Will the sixth grade camping trip proceed or has it been canceled?
Any overnight trips, any field trips have been canceled for this year?
Another question from Christine Gondar. Can you clarify and explain how the classrooms in the elementary schools will be cleaned after lunch on the days in which lunch will be eaten in the classrooms? Will each table in the room be wiped down? Will there be an aerosol sprayed into the classrooms? And are you using any concrobin or other cleaner? Thank you.
Jen or Eve want to talk about, I know you already mentioned about cleaning, but talk about the cleaning after lunch?
Yeah, so we, we have been using a, in the large spaces, we've been cleaning with, you know, we sweep, we mop, and then we use the same spray that's been used in the intercession period in all of the classrooms. When they're eating in, that's in the large spaces. In the classrooms, we've been using a disinfecting wipe because part of the issue is students not always being able to vacate the classroom space if there's inclement weather. Because there is also a period after you spray in which the room has to be vacant. But the students, it's important to remember that the students are staying in the same seat that they're eating in. It's not that someone else is then going to occupy that seat. The, the spray that we use, by the way, is, is not a spray that is for the aerosols or for the air. As Victoria mentioned, that's a ventilation issue. So there are various ways that you can clean surfaces that we're doing effectively. Ventilation is the methodology for the, for the air issue.
Thank you. And then I think the last question that is specifically related to the elementary school comes from Amy List. In this model, fifth and sixth graders will not return to school for four weeks. What factors did you consider when determining how quickly third through sixth graders are invited back? And what can be done to expedite the process for bringing back fifth and sixth graders?
So I, I can, I can start there. Our, our goal for the entire year has been this, the youngest students and the students who are struggling the most with remote learning. We wish we could bring them all back at the same time, but our phased-in careful approach has been working. Even at the high school, as Kyle mentioned, we won't be able to bring all the students back the same day that we're going to have the older students remote while we bring back the, the younger. So it's the same idea of phasing so that we can assure all of our processes are in place in terms of hallway drop-off, pickup and, and, and the entire return of the students. But we, we agree, we would like them all back faster. But the fact that we wanted to share a schedule with parents and then not have to change it if we weren't able to meet it, we wanted to share a schedule that we could meet.
I think too, Victoria, it's worth mentioning that there's a lot of logistics involved in terms of moving around literally hundreds of desks and making sure the rooms are set up correctly to accommodate kids while maintaining social distancing and the lead time for putting out the barriers and all that. So there's a significant amount of moving around and rearranging that has to get done at the same time as while we have school going on. Fortunately, we have the break, which will help. But I know that we're going to be quite busy setting up classrooms for the next few weeks. Not to mention moving things out of classrooms to make room for all those kids. So it's quite a bit of logistical work that goes into it.
And can I just add one more piece that I want to mention? And, and I agree with what Dr. Niwell said. Of course, we would all love to have these students back. One thing that we are proud of with our fifth and sixth grade teams is that they are able to teach them synchronously throughout the day. So they're remoting the students in. And with the speakers that we got from the PTA and the ESF, the sound in the classroom is, is if they are all together. So it is a, a great, it's not what we all want and we'd all love them back in the room immediately. But at least we do feel like they are part of the classroom, even if they're learning from home.
Thank you. As I indicated at the beginning of this, there's a lot of questions that relate specifically to the high school. I'm going to try to group them to the best that I can where they're similar. And again, I think Kyle, you've addressed a lot of them, but if there's any additional points to consider based on the question would be helpful. I think first one, we always want to be student-first. So this comes from Seth Corwin. Have the students been surveyed on their feelings about the return to a nine-period schedule?
Not yet, although I did meet with my principal's advisory committee earlier today. And we talked about what that survey, what questions might be included. And we do plan to meet with students later in the week and using the same format, we'd meet with them and then send out a survey to collect their thoughts.
Thank you. The next three, Kyle, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to read them in succession. I think they generally have the same theme to them. And if there's any additional comments that you have, it could be helpful. First one comes from Emily Kraus. This is not a question, but a comment. I fully support the kids going back full-time. However, I think that they have had so many changes over the past year that the school day schedule should stay the same. It took a lot to adapt to what they have now. And I think it would be too much of a change to also change the schedule with two months of school left. The next comes from Rod Burns. Why are we now making a change? Things have been going very well. What benefits are we going to really see in the two months left? Why make things difficult when they're working? And the last one in this block comes from Lori Lovich. Our kids need less disruption, not more. So please don't change the schedule. Also, the nine-period day is also less safe because it requires more class transitions per day and will not allow most kids enough time to leave campus for lunch, making the lunch hour extremely dangerous. Why are you changing the schedule rather than sticking with the current schedule and allowing kids the option to be in school for the full day? There still needs to be fluidity since some kids will need to stay home in anticipation of standardized tests for quarantines, et cetera. If there is a severe spike with more dangerous variants, school might have to shut down.
I think at the core of those questions is the idea of why would we move away from the AM PM day when it's worked well at the same time of wanting to offer a full-day option? And I, I think what needs to be really clear is that as well as the AM PM schedule has worked, there's not an ability to offer a full-day option with the AM PM schedule in a safe way because of the hundreds of students who would be free during the transition period and in the adjacent time to the transition period. And if we know that we can't put together a safe plan with the AM PM schedule, that means we need to move away from that. It is our belief that many families would also like to have their students back on campus for the full day. And so we want to be able to provide that opportunity. That opportunity comes with the nine-period day. And why make that change at this point? Our sense, and we'll find out what the community wants when we send the survey out. But our sense is that our community does want to, uh, option for a full day. We would do that with a nine-period day. And the benefit of using the nine-period day at this point is that it does move us closer to what school will look like in September. It is, we are aware of the concerns related to COVID. If you have more classrooms and more trends, transitions throughout the day. Yes, I think it's important for us to be mindful of what, what that means, how to mitigate some of the concerns related to COVID. And I think that we have a lot of great guidelines and procedures in place. And we would continue to reinforce those throughout the year. To the best of my knowledge, and I do a lot of the contact tracing at the junior, senior high school, of all the students and everyone who's been quarantined, we've not seen transmission. So we want to continue that good work moving forward. And the benefits of moving to the nine-period day with a full-day option, we think outweigh some of the concerns and drawbacks that were identified in those questions.
Thank you, Kyle. The next set, these are maybe more clarifying or procedural questions. So first, coming from Vanessa Pasqua. Will the cafeteria be selling food at the HHS?
The answer is yes. We'd have cold options for students. And by cold options, we mean sandwiches, salads. Everything would be bagged, ready to go. So students wouldn't have to wait in line. We're looking at the potential to have students order on an app before lunch period starts. So they literally walk in, get their lunch and then go outside and have their lunch.
The next comes from Laura Wilker. Why are the seventh and eighth graders not having finals?
So the conversations that we had throughout leadership in terms of finals, the validity and, and benefit of offering finals when we have so many students are remote, there was a belief that if everyone could be on campus, for some departments, they felt like they would like to offer finals. Knowing that all students won't be on campus, to take time away from instructional days for assessments that, that not everyone would take. And we don't know what that information would, would really provide us. We believe it's better to use that time to offer instructional days and extend the school year.
Thank you. From a question from Luca Carter. If a student chooses the hybrid system with a nine-period schedule and uses the lunch period to travel, when does he or she actually eat?
We expect to see some students eat in the car with their parents. We could see that even full-day students, they might use that option. The other thing to know is that we currently have students who eat while they're at home, if they're on class and, and Google Meet. And that, and that's okay for them to do that. So they wouldn't only be allowed to eat during that lunchtime, they could eat before they transition to school.
Another question from Laura Wilker. I'm concerned that students will feel free to come and go during the day with this schedule. Do you think that this is true?
The likelihood that we would have students leave in campus and come to campus is far greater with the AM PM schedule, given all of the free time that students have. If you're a seventh or eighth grader, there's never a time that you'd be on campus where you weren't scheduled. If you're free, you have a study hall. If you have a lunch period, we have a place for you to go. So I actually think that the likelihood to have students come as they want, I, I don't think we would see that nearly as much with the nine-period day.
Question from Song Lee. Will you be separating the hybrid students into cohorts again? Possibly even, even day, odd day cohorts? Could the students choose which cohort to be in so that they could avoid never seeing their friends by being in opposite? Could the students choose which cohort to be in so that they could avoid never seeing their friends by being in opposite cohorts?
The idea of having an AM and PM cohort, that no longer exists with the nine period day. So we would talk with students who want to go hybrid to determine what hybrid, what options work best for them. So again, they may be on campus one day in the morning and then remote in the afternoon and alternate the next day. So we'd want to provide some flexibility there. With that flexibility, students could see each other across cohorts.
Question from Amanda Jaffe. Can 10 minutes be added to each of the six periods? So that there's less of an issue with the transition and kids can just have regular lunch?
The issue with that is that if you look at a given day, not every student would be on campus, would then have lunch. Right? We don't have periods four, five, six, seven on every cycle day. The other issue is that if we reduce the transition times such that it's impossible to get to school or leave to get home for remote classes, you take away that option for those students.
Oh, then the next two questions I think that you have addressed. So I just want to make sure that they're recognized and if there's any difference, let me know. The first is from Lisa Schneider. With a nine period schedule, what happens to band and chorus? Right now with the AM PM, they've been able to split the groups to be small enough to be properly distanced with the nine periods. There's less flexibility to do the same with smaller groups.
They would still need to split the groups. The question is, what's the frequency with which they would meet? And our band and chorus teachers and strings, they're all working on that as we speak to try to determine what that schedule would look like.
Question from Liang Feng. With a nine period day, what's different with respect to the sanitation, sanitation, sanitation and disinfection?
Again, during the transition period currently, we disinfect then, and then at the end of the day. With the nine period day, there's a lot more cleaning that needs to happen related to lunch. So our focus, we would try to prioritize the areas that students eat while also identifying what classrooms are free during the day to see if those could also be disinfected. But we would continue to disinfect at the end of each school day.
One last kind of procedural question comes from Brenda Roy. If a seventh or eighth grader chooses to be full time in person, can they eat lunch in school?
Yes, if you're full time in person as a seventh or eighth grader, you will have a designated lunch period and you would eat lunch during that time.
This question here, I think the first half has certainly been answered. The second half, I think, I'm not sure, has been addressed the same way. It's from Jenita Jaffe. I have heard little support for the nine period day. Would there be a possibility of researching other options to keep the six period day or re-survey parents? Who given a nine period day versus six period may make a different choice. I think the second half of that is also, have there been any discussions with other schools who do full remote for eight to nine periods? And the social emotional learning impact on it has its students?
Many of our neighboring school districts went with a different schedule than we used in September, right? We used the AM PM schedule. Many schools went with an alternating day where they kept their eight or nine periods in September. We didn't think that that was the right way to go when school started because we wanted to have the transition. We wanted to have the different cohorts so that students were on campus every single day. There is evidence through, throughout the year of schools using a nine period day in order to try to make this work during the pandemic. We're moving towards that because we want to make sure that students are on campus with a full day option. So I think as the landscape has shifted, our thinking has shifted to, to try to be mindful of the need to have a full day option and to be prepared to get closer to what it will look like in September. I think any other reorganization of a schedule related to the MPM schedule just introduces another schedule that students would only have for, you know, a month and a half, two months and doesn't move us closer to that goal that we have to be where we will be in September.
Question from Sarah Wilson. What is the nine period day based off of? And why even consider doing it with two months of school left? Students have worked hard to create a schedule that works for them in this horrible year. The nine period schedule would completely destroy the schedules as well as disrupting many upperclassmen's mental health. Please give some insight as to how this is better, quote unquote, better for students.
The nine period schedule is the traditional schedule that we've used prior to the pandemic. And there are things that work well with it. And then there are other things that maybe, you know, I think people are open to now after having the experience of using a drop schedule. The idea of what a block schedule looks like. So the, the question really becomes, do we want to offer a full day option to students? We think that the community does want a full day option. If we want a full day option, the way we would offer that is through the nine period day. At the same time, we're mindful of the change that this creates for families. So that's why we want to continue to offer the hybrid option. And we need to collect data with the survey to see what is the desirability? Where is the community with this option to see if this is an improvement over our current schedule?
Thanks, Kyle. This question here, I think has been addressed in a different way, but I think it speaks more to the structure of the AM PM model. It's from Hillary Platus. Why can't we stick with the six periods but make each class just an extra seven minutes longer? To get rid of such a huge block of time in the middle?
Again, any time that we take away from the transition period can help us because it reduces the transition period. But it also reduces the opportunity for students to have lunch on campus and reduces the opportunity for students to move away from campus to go home for remote classes or to come to class on campus if they were remote. The other thing is if it was just the transition period, that would be a different situation than what we have now. We also have so many students who are free because of the embedded lunch periods. And if you lengthen the class periods, that just increases the time that they have their lunch or they're free, which still becomes a concern in addition to the transition period.
Okay, last, last two questions. This one comes from Don Hustry. The block schedule has been a gift for the high school students. Parenthetically, she says, deeper discussions, time during the day to catch up on work, et cetera. Is there an option around keeping the block schedule for the high school?
The survey that we're going to send out, I think, is going to try to capture what the desire is to keep what we have versus the option for a full day, nine period schedule. And I, you know, I tend to agree that I think the schedule has worked out far better than we could even have hoped last summer when it was designed. But it truly was designed with a hybrid approach in mind. If we were in a place where we didn't have the lunch periods embedded and we could change that, I think we'd be in a different place in order to be able to continue this. But given the space limitations we have, we didn't have that flexibility in how we designed the schedule.
I think a good closing question for this section of the meeting from Laura Wilker. It really speaks to what the next steps are. How will you recommend that EHS parents decide whether they're comfortable with this structure versus what we've had this far this year? I was comfortable with, with in-person with six period schedule, but I'm not sure how to assess the nine period day.
That, that question of what, what to recommend is a difficult question to answer because every family has their own unique circumstances. I think what we're seeing is that, that there are huge benefits to having students on campus. And so, you know, I, I'll just make it personal. If it were me and I had a child and I had to pick one of these options. My child's, my children are much younger, but I would probably go with the option for a full day with a nine period, knowing all of the benefits of being on campus of ending the year the way we want to start next year. And I'm mindful of some of the challenges and drawbacks, but I think that the benefits outweigh the concerns. But as I say that, that's just my own take. So I think each family has to decide what, what works best for them. And if you have specific questions, please reach out to any administrators, to counselors to help sort of talk through what some of those concerns are if you were to come back full day. So you have a full picture and you have the ability to make an informed decision.
Kyle, I lied to you. There's, there's one more.
There's gonna be one more, Brian, after this too. So.
Okay, sorry. This comes from Joy Rowe. This is specifically for the high school. Does this mean that students will be getting a whole new schedule? And then with the longer block learning schedule that had to be created this year, it feels like a setback to move in that direction. The work is to create nine periods again for two months of instruction. Would resources not be better used to encourage more of the remote students to enter the hybrid schedule the way it has worked so well thus far? Lastly, any thoughts on the impact of no finals for 11th graders as they approach applying for college? If they may not have a full transcript of grades for college applications?
So in terms of finals, the only grades that are on the transcript are the final grades. So the final grade would still appear on a junior's transcript. So there's no change regardless of whether they have finals or not. And then, Brian, can you read the first, the first part of that again?
Yeah, the, the question is, does this mean that students will be getting a whole new schedule? And the second part of it is, is more of a comment about a step back with only two months left.
Yeah, we adopted the nine period schedule to fit into our AM PM. So students won't have any teachers changed, none of their classes changed. Just the way their day is organized would be oriented back to a nine period day. But there are no changes to, for students with teachers. So in that way, there is a seamless transition back.
And I, I think to the best of my knowledge, I think that represents all the questions that were asked.
Someone just put another question in row 26, Brian, I think.
Okay, thank you. That question comes from Song Lee. Says, thank you so much for your efforts put into allowing so many options for this community and also providing the safest possible way to do so. As many parents seem to be concerned about changing to nine period schedule, would you please consider asking the question again in parent survey where the parents would opt for a full nine period schedule? And if there are enough parents who are resistant to nine period schedule, how would that affect the decision to fully in-person instruction scenario for the rest of the year?
We do want to try to capture the desire to have a nine period full day option versus what we currently have. And how will that inform our decisions moving forward? I think the more information we have to see where we are as a community and how we best want to provide options for students, we'll make sure that we provide a thoughtful decision moving forward. I think we want to try to capture all that information. You can tell that when we captured the information related to the AM PM schedule, we quickly realized that wouldn't work. And so we had to adapt our plans. We're hopeful that we will be able to answer the question of how do we move forward for the remainder of the year when this next survey goes out. So I'll put in a plug here. Please take the time to complete the survey. The more responses we have, the better. It just helps us make an informed decision.
Thank you, Kyle. Victoria, Alec, I'll pass it back to one of you.
Alec, anything?
I actually have one more question if I could.
I'm sure I was muted. Go ahead, Monica.
Sure. Um, Kyle, I just want to clarify my understanding. It kind of came up with all these questions and answers. If we were to stick with a block schedule, the current block schedule creates too much downtime, unstructured downtime for the kids, which is what the drawback is. And the idea, not that I'm suggesting you should do this, but I, I heard it kind of suggested out there. The idea of a different block schedule, is that being held, is that not possible because of classroom space?
Depends on what you were trying to do with the block schedule. So the idea of taking the current schedule that we have and just making some periods longer and completely eliminating the transition period. If we just take day one, for example. Day one, you have course one, two, five, four, three, six. So if you have a period seven lunch, you no longer have a lunch period. And if you go through each of the days, that holds true where some students would not have lunch. And there's no way to collapse periods at this point. So you only have three lunch periods. That limitation is based on limited classroom space.
Okay. Okay. Thank, it is complicated, isn't it?
Yeah, there's so many different details to this and, and it's interesting because the questions that we had was very similar to our own thought process as we were planning the different options to think through what could or could not work. And so many of the questions were like, oh, we remember when this came up in our conversations of pros and cons and why this, this may not work or why it can't work. So it's helpful to have all of these questions just to make sure that we don't have any blind spots or things that we haven't thought about. So thank you.
I'll, let me, I'll just add one thing onto that because I think it's, it's not always clear to families who see maybe just one, one student's schedule. The, I think often the thought is that we could just remove the lunch periods because there are eight periods of instruction. Let's move it down to an eight period and that would buy us a little additional time. When, when your child is eating lunch, there are three quarters of the campus is in a class. And so removing that one period would then remove that whole instructional block as well. And, and you can't just redistribute those classes across the remaining periods in the day.
Great. Well, thank you all very much for, again, for all the work that's gone into this. And thank you, Brian, for moderating and everyone for taking care of those questions. And I, we will now, I will now pass it back to Victoria to move on with the next item on the agenda.
Yes, thank you so much. Thanks for the questions and thanks to everyone for the discussion. We would encourage everyone to please stay for our important bond vote and bond presentation. So tonight is a board vote to move us ahead on the bond vote. And you might ask, why bond, right? What, why, for those of you who maybe haven't seen a number of the presentations, we're bonding because we focus on excellence. Tonight, the board will take an important step to preserve and enhance a valuable community asset. And that asset is the Edgemont Schools. So why now? For fiscal responsibility, we, in order to minimize the impact on the taxpayers of Edgemont, the first payment on this bond will align with the rolling off of older debt in 2023. So the, the bond has been planned carefully for that opportunity. And everything Edgemont has been focused on excellence, fiscal responsibility and collaboration. So how have we done that? We have done it through collaboration with the community. Beginning in 2018, the district has gathered information from a host of sources and navigated through a pandemic to create this bond proposal. So tonight's goal of the presentation before the vote is to establish the cost, scope of work, scope of work to be voted on, the voting structure and the language to be included on the ballot, which will be before the Edgemont voters on May 18, 2021. So now I'd like to turn it over to Brian Paul to highlight the components of the bond prior to the vote.
Thanks, Victoria. I think as, as Victoria just said, the, the purpose tonight is not to go into great detail on each of the propositions as we, we have spent some significant time, both in previous board meetings that are available, both on our bond website and also on the district's YouTube page. But really the focus tonight is, is to give a high level overview of what is contained within the overall scope of work that will be presented across two propositions on May 18th, the same day as the budget vote. Again, quick review, the, the structure of the vote is to be a contingent bond vote, meaning that proposition one, which contains the vast majority of the work, must pass in order for proposition two to have a chance of passing itself. Community members will vote on both aspects of the bond separately and each requires a simple majority vote to be considered for passing. Since we last met and spoke publicly about the bond, there've been really two key areas that have helped us refine the scope of work and the cost associated with that. We've been holding community outreach meetings with many of the local neighborhoods and would encourage anyone whose name is not yet on this list would like to meet with us to please reach out to either Victoria or I. Because we found these meetings to be incredibly helpful in helping us really narrow our focus, understand some of the concerns and address those concerns before we get deep into the process. In addition to that, you'll see three dates on April 8th, 9th and 15th. We're tentatively holding to hold coffees at the junior, senior high school at night and at the elementary schools during the day to provide additional opportunities for anyone who's been unable to meet these smaller focus sessions to come and ask any questions as it relates to the bond. We will record those meetings and make them publicly available for anyone who's unable to attend those. And I think the other major part that I think we talked about is we've done a more detailed cost estimation, which has always been in the pipeline for the work. We had an initial scope of work and costs determined by our architectural partners. And, you know, they did an excellent job of giving us a really good estimate. And we've gone a little bit deeper with that with a more formalized cost estimation. And we've gone a little bit deeper with that with a more formalized cost estimation to really refine the numbers and make sure that the scope of work that we are hoping the board will vote upon tonight is as clearly outlined as possible. I think, so tonight, talk about those two parts, the community outreach, the most glaring area of concern that was brought to our attention that we just want to really make sure that we clarify this evening relates to the site plan contained in prop, on proposition number two at the junior senior high school. Most importantly, it relates to the aspect, the area you see on the right-hand side of my screen, which outlines a, an additional new two-lane passageway, a roadway connecting artillery lane up to the newly constructed building adjacent to the A building that you see here in blue, which in theory then connects over to the road you see in the upper right-hand side of my screen, which is Old Colony Road. In the process of doing that work to create a alternate entrance and exit point for school drop-off and pickup, facilitate additional parking for staff to eliminate or alleviate some of the challenges that we face up in the main parking area, and also to ensure that we have more efficient and appropriate passageway for emergency vehicles. We've created this structure here with the help of our architects, Fuller and D'Angelo. In our previous presentations, we showed a diagram that shows a connection between Old Army, sorry, Old Colony Road and artillery lanes extension point, and we just want to clarify that this evening. A lot of concern has been brought to our attention about the increased possible, or the possible increase to traffic going through Old Colony and heading down towards Hartsdale Village. The current plan has us separating these two areas into independent drop-off and pickup locations and independent parking areas, such that the access point from artillery lane that comes up by the new building would have its own turnaround point, would have its own parking area, as well as what we currently face coming off of Old Colony, which as is, has a parking area and drop-off location. What you see in white in the dotted lines would be a barrier of a sort that would allow for only, or it would be intended for emergency vehicle access only, to provide opportunities for the emergency vehicles, a fire truck, an ambulance, to have greater access to the resource building, the E building, and also to the neighbor, neighboring homes in this area of Edgemont. I think that was the one area that that came through many of the conversations that we just wanted to make sure that we more formalize this evening. And then, as I had indicated earlier, just going to give a high level overview of the two propositions. Lots of words are on these slides and not intended to be really looked at in great detail right now. I'm not going to read them word for word, but this presentation will also be made publicly available tomorrow morning as we roll it over to the public side on board docs and is intended to be a place where the community could go and get additional information. As we've talked in the previous meetings, bond proposition one is about space acquisition. At the junior senior high school, it would be building that new building that we saw in blue, and then a complete renovation of the A building. Both buildings certainly would be an increase in overall classroom space for class utilization, but would also, the new building would be built in a way that would support a second story down the road if there was a need for additional build-out in the district. Both of these buildings, once fully completed, would be air-conditioned through a new HVAC system. At Greenville Elementary School, similarly, we'd be looking to add additional space. On the left-hand side of the diagram, you see a small new wing being built that would contain up to five classrooms. Similar to the junior senior high school, it would be fortified in a way that would allow for future growth to a second floor if need be, and the new space would be air-conditioned as well. At Sealy Place, the major change in bond proposition one is about the mechanical system upgrades. So we'll be replacing the current unit ventilating systems or reutilizing them in a way that would allow for air conditioning in the original footprint of the building. Under bond proposition two, the scope of work really falls into two categories. It's the expansion of cafeterias and serveries, and then it's the traffic site access, emergency vehicle access and parking. At the junior senior high school, we would look to expand the overall square footage of the cafeteria, reclaim the cafeteria annex as additional cafeteria space and reroute the serving area to accommodate greater student access and facilitate an easier serving of food. The space would permit us to use, it would be permitted to be used for classroom activities outside of the lunch periods, and would provide a greater mixed-use space for student collaboration and for community use. Again, the new builds would be, hopefully would be retrofitted with opportunities for air conditioning in them. In terms of site work at the junior senior high school, I just, I highlighted the major change that we spoke to, and I'll just highlight the language you see here. Under the second bullet point, it says the pass-through between the extended service road and Old Colony Road is planned to be limited to emergency access. The purpose behind the expansion of that access is to alleviate the traffic that we have that comes in off of White Oak Lane and provide alternate access points and, and exit points, both for the typical daily traffic patterns, but also for emergency vehicles. At Sealy Place and at Greenville, ultimately, we have the same goals in mind. In Greenville, it would be the leveling of the current platform space in the cafeteria and creating a new serving area and warming kitchen. The key highlight there is that we'd be able to provide food service at the elementary schools by bringing food from the junior senior high school cafeteria kitchen over to the elementary school. In addition, contained under bond proposition two is also site work, not that dissimilar from what we see at the junior senior high school, allowing for a second access point coming off of Artillery Road, additional parking and some additional staging areas for cars to alleviate the traffic that backs up on Glendale Road. At Sealy Place, similar to Greenville, the cafeteria would be outfitted with a new serving space and warming kitchen, allowing for food service that's prepared at the junior senior high school. And following in the same general scope and idea as the other two schools, we would be adding additional access points for parents, drop-off and pickup in the back of the building, additional parking off of Ardsley Road that would have a lighted walkway, and also creating additional opportunities for emergency vehicle access through a fortified surface that was grass-covered that runs along the back of the building. When we last presented numbers, we had, as I said, a really good estimate performed by our architects. And we've done a deeper dive into this. And so tonight, we'll ask the board, as Victoria had stated, to vote on the language, the scope of work and the dollar values that will be included on the May 18th vote. They would be in the dollar values that you see on the screen here. Bond proposition one at $38,858,500. Bond proposition two, coming in at slightly higher than the original estimation of $15,282,625. In totality, a successful passing of the two bond propositions would lead to a $54,141,125 total bond for the district. Just a last plug, we are constantly updating our bond website. If you were to go on right now, you will see the previous numbers and previous information as, as we are waiting for authorization from the board this evening. But upon that authorization, what you'll see is starting tomorrow, we will be updating the website with all of the up-to-date and, you know, most relevant information to our current conversations, as well as putting up additional presentations that we've made, including tonight's for the community to view. I think Victoria's done a great job of explaining this in the small groups. We've tried to design the website in a way that allows you to dig as deep as you need to dig. It might be just high-level question and answer. It might be looking at the overall cost of the propositions. It might be looking at some of the conceptual architectural sketches. It might be digging really deep and looking at tax implications and going even further. And we hope that you can utilize that, and if you have any questions, to please reach out to either one of us. Victoria, I'll pass it back to you if there's anything you think I missed before we go back to the board.
Well, thanks so much, Brian, and I'd like to pass back to Alec for board questions. And then maybe taking the item out of order for a vote.
Yep, thank you very much. Thank you again, Brian, for sort of running through that for us, as Brian said. We've gone through this quite a number of times, and there certainly will be a number of additional times for people who have not yet come up to speed on, on this to, either through the bond site, through, we'll have further discussions, both in board meetings and further opportunities to, you know, in like civic association meetings and other forums for people to become better informed before they're actually asked to vote on it. Having said that, I will, I'm going to turn to the board right now for questions, but if there's anyone in the community who has a question that they'd like to get answered tonight, now would be the time to use the form to put that in there, and we'll, we'll take a look at the, those questions once we've gone through any, any board questions. So with that, I will open it up to the board. Judy.
First of all, I just want to acknowledge how thorough each of these presentations have been tonight and how much I appreciate the detail and the clarification and explanation of what is, what is happening or what is planned to happen. I just want to get a confirmation that the same type of consideration being given to allowing emergency access, essentially limited to emergency access, or that's the general plan at the high school, will also take place at Greenville, because there is the same kind of through passageway that will be constructed there.
Yes, certainly, we can give that same consideration to Greenville in terms of allowing two separate access points for pickup and drop-off and also limit the access to emergency access as well. We'll, we'll look at that, what that operationally looks like. We haven't had as many discussions about drop-off and pickup at Greenville, but we will absolutely have those discussions and clarify that, but it wouldn't remain open all the time.
I wouldn't just use this as a plug to encourage the Longview Civic Association and maybe Southern Greenville to reach out to the district and see if they can set up a bond presentation meeting so that you have an opportunity for voices to be heard.
Great. We'll also be reaching out to neighbors there as well.
Terrific. Thank, thank you.
Jennifer.
Thank you. And Brian, I have always appreciated your presentations. You just have a way of clarifying things for me that, that I really just makes everything clear, I guess. So, um, the numbers that you have presented tonight, and I appreciate, when you compare them to prior numbers and when you compare them to backup information that we got, there are some differences, and I appreciate some of that is just simply going into the greater detail that you mentioned. But, you know, many of these specific projects are coming in a little higher. Greenville's, the addition is coming in lower. Can you expand on what's, what's going on there?
All right, I can start, and maybe either John or John could, could jump in. I think, you know, in terms of like the high-level look at it, I think your, our initial estimates were done mainly off of square footage, right, using a common understanding of the cost to build based on square footage. And then there's been a refinement process by having an estimator actually come in and identify on, on more of a line-by-line item of what would be needed to accomplish the work. And again, I commend John D'Angelo for giving such a really close, accurate estimation from the beginning to where our numbers are not that disparate from that at this point. But John or John, is there, is there anything in particular that you would highlight that, you know, shows the differences between the, what was originally estimated and what we've come to now?
Good evening, everyone. I think Brian has outlined it pretty well in that we're, we've dug deeper. We're looking at a more line-by-line estimate, trying to identify a lot of contingencies and ensuring that, that we have as accurate a number as possible. We're trying to estimate a project now based on conceptual plans that we're not planning to start that construction for another year and a half or two years. So we're trying to make sure that we're building in the correct contingencies, and as we generate more information and have more feedback, we're able to refine those numbers to a greater extent.
John.
Thank you. And Jennifer, I think just worth putting some voice to this in terms of total dollar value. Previously presented, total dollar value presented today, the difference is approximately $750,000 more on the sum of the two propositions when we look at them in totality.
I appreciate that, thank, that explanation. Thank you. Can I just follow up and ask, maybe this is more of a question for, a follow-up on what John said. Previously, soft costs had been estimated at about 30%, and now they're coming in at 25%. Are you comfortable that that provides enough cushion for these contingencies now that you've looked at it in more detail?
Yeah, I think we are, and we did a deeper drill down on the actual soft costs and in establishing those, that percentage and what the actual costs we would be anticipating under those soft cost line items. So I think based on the size and scope of the overall bond, we were really able to get a little more definitive on that, that percentage number.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing here in the case of both differences, for people who are going to look at them more carefully, it's, it's basically boils down to the making a less rough estimate, essentially. So you, you've looked in more detail than, than the previous numbers, and that explains the differences that we're seeing. Is that correct?
Yeah, as we progress with the project, we're always working to get a less rough estimate, yes.
Thank you.
And I would just add, Jennifer, that the, you know, as we've, the language we've used often throughout this process is we're still, it's hard to believe, we're in the conceptual phase, because this project is still a long ways out. And so the concepts do continue to progress and become more clear. And, you know, with the hopeful, successful passing of a vote in May, they're going to progress rather quickly after that to, to get to the educational specificity, the site specificity, and really start to dig into some of those details. But even well before that, really starting tomorrow, assuming that we have board authorization to do so, we'll start discussing in terms of how, what information is needed to help progress that to the next step by working with teachers, students, administrators, everybody to get some additional specifications that would help in that process.
Fantastic. I appreciate you clearing that up for me. Thank you.
Any other board questions, comments at this point? Pamela.
I just want to thank everyone again for all their hard work on this, because I can see it's, it's, it's been a work in progress, but a lot of thought has gone into it. So thank you. This is, I think, more question for Brian and Victoria. So John, you can step down, maybe. My question is this, I know that the bond was broken into two pieces. Proposition one, which you all have described as tax-friendly, in that it is effectively replacing a bond that's already rolling off. And then we have proposition two, and wrapped up in proposition two are the emergency, the access roads, the emergency access and the serveries in the school and the expansion of the cafeteria, serveries in the elementary schools and the expansion of the cafeteria in the high school. So my question is, if proposition one passes and proposition two does not, when, when would we ever be, when would we next have the opportunity to, to get those things that are in proposition two, because they seem pretty important to me?
No, I think that's a great point. Pamela, they're both very important. No, I think that's a great point. Pamela, they're both very important. And we split them into two propositions in sensitivity to the community in terms of community members who might have seen less income or be struggling as a result of the pandemic. But they're absolutely both necessary and we would especially have the economy of timing and the economy of scale by doing it now. Because we're doing the construction, we're onsite, the equipment's onsite. So it's better timing to do it now because it's not going away. And the next time it comes back, it would be even more expensive. So I don't know, Brian, or if you want to add to that.
I think that answer is the perfect one. I think that that's the key part to this right now. However, the answer to the question of when would be, it could be the next year. All right, it would be, I think, in collaboration with the board as to when we thought would be the best time to go at it next, based on what the need was. And I think, you know, one option is that we've clearly tried to target this bond proposition for the rolling-off debt. The next set of debts that would be rolling off would not occur until the 26, 27 year. But that, again, that could be another opportunity too, if the board's desire was to try to tie it to a time like that.
Thank you.
Judy?
Um, I saw that the last line of the bond scope and estimated cost summary document, it references 5% of, I guess, 5% allotted costs for construction contingency, additional costs during construction slash dash change orders. And I was just wondering if somebody could provide an example of what might be included that would be covered by this fee? Or I guess it's another way of saying of what isn't part of the contingency costs within the 5%? Or not within the 5%?
John, could you help us with that one, please?
Yeah. The construction contingency is really to cover any unanticipated costs which arrived, which arise during the construction process. Some of the work we're doing is renovations within 50, 100-year-old buildings. If we open a wall and find a pipe that wasn't anticipated, that would be a change order to the construction contract to cover items such as that unanticipated events during, during construction.
But does that mean that there is, that 5% will cover the extra fees then?
That's the plan. Any additional cost would be covered under that 5%. We're anticipating it to be much, I wouldn't say much lower, but lower than 5%. 5% is a, is a safe contingency number to carry at this time in the process and this time in the project. But that's, the intent of that, that budget line item is to cover any of those unanticipated costs during construction.
So is there anything that could happen that's big enough that wouldn't be covered by that 5%? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
John, I can jump in a little. I think, Judy, I would say this year, right? Pandemic changes that occur, things that we can't predict. There certainly is, you know, issues that could arise to something that is greater than that. I do think that we've come to a good estimate for what would be normal, given the scope of the work and the type of work that's being done. And we want to make sure that there is room for that contingency. But I don't, I don't think an assurance could be made to say that something couldn't happen that could go above it. What we want to do is protect ourselves to be able to accomplish the scope of work with the budget that we have. And ultimately, that is a smaller budget within the budget, right? A budget for some of those contingencies within the broader budget.
So, so if something unexpected happens, it gets priced out and then it gets essentially credited against that 5%? And then, but we can't, we can't go over that 5% without paying more. Is that, is that correct?
No.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, no, no. That's a great question, Judy. And I understand what you're asking now. The big dollar values is the dollar that matters. So, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but efficiencies found in other areas of the project would help support an area where we could go over, under that, given that they all fall under the scope of work that is included in this process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Monica?
So I just want to reflect for a minute. When this whole thing started and the big unwieldy nut you guys were trying to crack and try to figure out what was on that wish list, which was so big, of all the things we wanted and how you synthesized it down, not just, not just that you got it down, but you did it in, I think, a way that really meets the needs of the district in both a fiscally responsible way and in the needs of the students and delivering education and safety to them and to the parents and the taxpayers. And I just think, you know, the enormity of it when we first started was really kind of like rattling me a little bit, like, my God, this is like such a big decision. And I want to say you guys really made it very easy. You made it, what you've given us to approve is, is, is the easy part for us at this point because of all the hard work that you guys did upfront and all along the way. And so I just want to acknowledge that and say thank you to compliment, but to also say thank you on behalf of not just the board, but all the taxpayers and students and parents of this district for doing the job the way you did it and doing it in the middle of a 100-year pandemic. Like, okay, we'll just still get this done too. So kudos and thank you. I'm really impressed.
Thanks, Monica. It's been a great team effort, that's for sure.
Any other board question, comments at this point? I just have one thing that, again, maybe John, you can touch on. So you touched a little bit how, you know, as we dig down deeper and get a little further along in the process, you're able to refine for that soft dollar and other estimates as well. But can you just give us a high-level overview of what are the things that make up those soft-dollar costs? Just the basic categories and maybe some examples of the kinds of things that make up that, what is now a 25% of the overall cost?
Generally, it's all the costs that will be incurred by the district that aren't directly related to the actual construction, to the bricks and mortar. So it's costs like getting topographic surveys, property surveys, asbestos testing, monitoring during construction, fees for construction management services, fees for architecture engineering designs, all the ancillary fees that, that would be necessary for a project that aren't directly costs paid to contractors.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Anything else from the board? Do we have any, let's check, see if we had any questions come in. Does not look like any questions came in from the community while we've been talking. So with that, again, thank you all very much. And again, for the community, we'll have lots of other opportunities to talk about any specifics of anything that, you know, questions you still have outstanding. But at this time, Victoria, I guess we are going to pull out, well, since we've just finished our discussion about it, what is it, I-7?
Yes, yes. I-7, resolved by the Board of Education of the Edgemont Union Free School District at Greenberg in the County of Westchester, New York as follows. Section one, at the annual, yes. At the annual district meeting and election of the qualified voters of said school district to be held May 18th, 2021, and prescribing the form of such bond propositions to be inserted in the notice of such annual district meeting and election.
Is that the, sorry, is that the extent of the resolution?
So that was the resolution under business. Did you want me to read the?
That's fine.
Victoria, that's just the subject line? Sorry.
Resolved by the Board of, so let me pick up.
Yeah, the first sentence says in all caps, after that.
Section one, at the annual district meeting and election of the qualified voters of Edgemont Union Free School District at Greenberg in the County of Westchester, New York, the district, to be held on May 18th, 2021. Two bond propositions in substantially the form as hereinafter set forth shall be submitted to the qualified voters of said district. Said bond propositions shall appear in the notice of annual district meeting and election to be held May 18th, 2021. And the district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to include such bond propositions in said notice by inserting therein substantially the following paragraphs. Want me to read both bonds, both propositions in full?
Not unless that's a requirement. I know you've checked with council today, so.
It's not a requirement. They have been posted for the public and they are posted on the website.
So first, let me ask for the motion. Do I, we have a motion to approve? Monica, do we have a second? Judy? Does anyone have any questions or comments about this before we call the vote? All right. All those in favor? We are approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And with that, so we are now at our usual point of the consent portion of the agenda. Are there any items that anyone in the board would like to take separately or have a chance to discuss before we vote? Or is there, are there any items that the administration would like to say anything about before we call for a vote?
So actually, I would. I missed a recognition of community. I just want to give a shout-out to the hockey team. The E T E B, it's late, E B T E Hockey. Eastchester, Bronxville, Tuckahoe and Edgemont, the Eagles won the Southern Westchester Championship. So the ice hockey had an exciting win at the championship and an exciting season. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out. Great coverage in the Scarsdale Enquirer as well.
Wonderful. Congratulations to them.
So with that, I ask the board's approval of G personnel, numbers one through four, H students, number one, I business, numbers one through six and eight.
Do I have a motion approved? Marakita, second Pamela, all in favor? We are approved. Thank you all very much. Thank you for everyone who attended and for those who made it through to the bitter end here. This is a little longer than usual meeting. Last item here is a mention of our schedule. Our next meeting is our regular meeting on April 13th. So thank you all. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Marakita, second Pamela, we are adjourned. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night, all.